Part of me thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. We ask that you would give wisdom and knowledge and strength to the leaders of the city of Montgomery, Lord, most of all, we covered them. Lord, we pray for sustainability, Lord, we pray for availability, and most of all, accountability. The Father, we ask that you bless the citizens of Montgomery, everybody under the sound of my voice, Lord, and ultimately, Lord, just reward them for their sacrifice. These are another blessings, we ask in your name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cawley. At this time, um...
Please pause. You can go ahead. I'll do it. Please pause for a moment of silence. We have not had a meeting since Councilman Larkin has passed. So please, I have a minute of silence, please, for that, and I'll stop. Amen?
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the public, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Canceling the motion on the work session minutes for January the 5th?
Move to adopt.
Have motion all through, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion reg reg council meeting minutes for January the 5th?
Move to adopt.
Okay, raise your hand.
Four with two, seven and nine abstaining.
Okay. Approve of the work session minutes that was canceled on the 19th of January.
We have to do paperwork on that, I have to log it.
Motion on that, Council?
Move to adopt.
Okay, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Same thing on reg reg council meeting for the 19th of January, any motion?
Move to adopt.
Okay, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
Let me apologize to the council for not making it on to the work session. My intention to come down and listen in on some of the things you all are discussing, I apologize, but a matter came up that we've been dealing with in a phone call, we're still trying to work out. We've got a major project that we're working on. So anyway, I will brief you on some of those efforts. Hopefully, we can get this to closure. Here, I just think we got a few more details to work out, but it took longer than I wanted it to, so I do want just awful lot apologies on that. Um, let me just get started with the mayor's message with where we're staying with COVID. And we're going to start with our COVID-19 update. Should have it on your screens before you. And what you'll see is that January, we had 4,104 COVID cases that were confirmed during the month. We had 67 just today, and as of today, we've had 336 deaths in the county. 19,000 total cases confirmed by the county within average, seven-day average of about 4.71 here in the county. What you can see is that we're, you know, we're seeing more tests, we're seeing obviously the positive rates are also going up, but we've got work to do as a community where this stands, and we want to keep it at the forefront of the community because we know it's kind of been fatiguing for a lot of people here. Our teachers and our educators have certainly been dealing with quite a bit with MPS, and we want to try to assist them where we can from the city and from the county side. But it's something that we've got to make sure we keep in front of the community, even with some of the discussions around the vaccines and all of the information that you're getting where that's concerned. As we speak about the vaccine, I wanted to kind of do a quick recap for us, and I want to thank everyone at the city and the county, Montgomery EMA, Christina Thornton, Police Department Chief Finley, Chief Jordan Fire and Rescue, Alabama Department of Public Health, as well as our volunteers. In total, we had 1,100 people that were in the 1A-plus vaccine group who received free COVID-19 vaccinations on Saturday. Look forward to building on this with success. We know comes opportunity, and what we're looking at is continue to replicate and improving that efficiency from the standpoint of getting more people vaccinated. And so, Alabama Department of Public Health and Baptist Health in the county, as well as the city, are going to be partnering with us again to hold a vaccination, to hold a week of vaccination clinics from February the 8th through February the 12th. We would do 1,000 people for each of those days, and that will allow us to vaccinate 5,000 people. And we're looking forward to doing that because we want to try to get the vaccine out as much as we can to the public, and so we're glad that Saturday's run, test run went very well, and that we can do more. And I, again, I believe as we see more vaccines becoming more available at the state level and through the cities, we'll be able to increase our ability to vaccinate everyone. I know many of you have received calls, as I have, about how they get vaccinated, how can they get an appointment. So we've been working with the state in trying to bring that to greater efficiency, and I think we're starting to get there. I'm pausing because I don't want to jinx myself, but we're getting closer, we're getting closer to doing that, and we're also going to be a step closer to communicating this to the public through a public information campaign. So we want people to know what the facts are, to understand what their concerns are, and still to share why it's important for them to go forward with the vaccine. Now, just because you get vaccinated does not mean that we should stop wearing our masks. There's still going to be some lag time for us to do that, and we have to be prepared to do that for the foreseeable future. And so, these are say to the fact, the vaccines, and we want the public to know that because this is essential in terms of us beating the virus. So if I can ask all the city councilmen and women, as well as everyone that's here, please share in your own sphere of influence why it's important for people to get vaccinated. Please post anything that you may see from the Alabama Department of Public Health or from the CDC website, so that we can get the information out about why the vaccine is so critical to us getting things back to normal. And I am certainly one of those who hopes and believes that if we can do this, we can get to a sense of normalcy sooner than later, and that's something that I'm really looking forward to, as are, I'm sure, many of you. So again, just try to share that in whatever way you can with your sphere of influence and with your circle of friends, so we can pass this word on. Now, I'm going to transition a little bit from COVID, and we're going to talk a little bit about some good news that we've had here in our community. And before we get to the state of our community, I want to talk about the Camilla Bowl. The Camilla Bowl took place on December 25th on Christmas Day, and it garnered 2.1 million viewers, making the ESPN second highest rated bowl game among their 35 bowl games that they had. So, Mr. President, I think we found a winner in terms of when we ought to have a Camilla Bowl, because I don't think we're going to be able to beat that if we haven't had any other night outside of Christmas Day. So hopefully ESPN will work with us on that. And that follows up announcement that UAB and Jacksonville State will also play in the game this coming fall. So we're looking forward to, again, getting back to a sense of normalcy, and part of that is what we do with our sports council and everyone who's involved in that, and bringing people in and showing them a different side of Montgomery. Now, I will go to the state of our community, and I'll just kind of highlight a few things that I'm sure I don't have to tell anybody on this council and this audience, but there's been a lot of great work that's been done by our cabinet officials and everyone in their departments over the last year or so. And I wanted to have a state of the community address, because typically, what's been done, at least in the recent past, is that address has been given to the Chamber of Commerce. And so, the political leadership has updated the business leadership, but we haven't done as good of a job in updating the public in terms of some of the things that have been happening. And so, you're going to see some big numbers up here, some great accomplishments from many of our departments, and these were things that we tried to share in our state of the community address that aired on our local access channel, and we shared on our social media. But I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights as you read through some of the numbers that we have on the screen. We paved 80 different streets across our community. These were neighborhood connectors from Court Street, Fairview, to Hunter Luke Road and Anne Street. You can find out more about your street status at mzmstreetstatus.com if your street needs to be repaved. These are things that the city is doing every day that really makes a city go, and you can find out kind of where we are in various council districts with some of these street repavings. Also, some good news is our average housing sector sales price increased by 21%. That's a great trend, a great indication of a healthy, viable economy, and we want to make sure it keeps going in the right direction. One of the things that I think helped that a little bit was certainly our decreased overall crime rate, but also our increased investment in our public education and some of the great work that our educators are doing and our students are doing in our schools. All of those things impact what the most people, their largest investment, and that's their home. So we're excited to see this sales price increase by 21%, and we want to keep that going by reinvesting in the city as well. Total construction valuations for 2020 also increased by 15%, and that was during the pandemic. So we know as people pull back, our construction numbers went up, and that, again, is a sign of a viable community and one that is growing, and one that has the potential really to take off even after this COVID cloud lifts from all of us. We remediated 135 unsafe structures that were blighted beyond repair, and so we talk a lot about blight, and you'll hear some of our council members express a lot of concern about that in various districts. So we're continuing to try to do what we can on that end, and again, that's because of the hard work of the people that are behind me and many of the folks who are working there, departments and their divisions. Our goal is to repair 140 structures that have fallen into blight this year. So we don't just want to tear down, but where we can repair some of these older homes, we want to do that for the viability of their neighborhood. Again, we see the 22,000 tons that was collected by sanitation. We see the fire and rescue, public protection class one, ISO rating for providing superior protection to residents. Again, less than 0.2% of communities nationwide can claim that. City managed to maintain a growth rate of 3% in sales and use tax, very positive for us, as well as issuing 12,300 business licenses. And so, when we think about some of those things, we also look at the numbers. That's often what we talk about a lot here during the budget season, but even year-round. Revenue Division is credited with collecting approximately 73% of the city's general fund budget revenue, and finance was instrumental in the city's reorganization of the debt obligation by refinancing several debt issues that preserved cash flow to the tune of $9 million. That basically says that by refinancing and changing some of the debt, we saved almost $10 million or $9 million for the city itself just by doing that. And so, again, we want to credit those departments that were involved in that. Even our Neighborhood Services annual grant program reinvested nearly $40,000 from grants alone, and we're challenging them to find even more grants to reinvest in our neighborhoods to revitalize residential communities throughout all of our council districts. Now, we've got some bad news in here as well. While, again, the overall crime was down 13% year over year, our violent crime was too high. And so, we know there's still more work to be done and partnering with members of the community. We know that we have to do more to make sure that we're getting guns off the street, that we're trying to make things uncomfortable and affect the people who want to do bad things in the community regardless of what part of town they live on. So we're going to be focused on that, and that is a priority that we want to carry out in 2021 with a renewed emphasis. And so, we're going to switch up some things, try some different approaches, and see if that gives us some different results. I don't believe in just doing the same thing over and over, expecting that we're going to get the same results. We're going to have to change up a little bit, and that means we're going to have to invest in some areas where that's concerned and take some different approaches to making sure that not only the public health of this community is addressed through crime, and we're trying to reduce that, but also the economic health of this community is addressed where that is concerned. So that's just kind of a highlight of some of the things that we talked about in the state of the community address. If you have not heard it, both from the city side as well as from the county side, I would encourage you to pull it up on the city's website. I think our news outlets have it on their websites, it's on local access, so it's anywhere you want to find it. But this is for the people who really want to know what's happening in the city, what has happened over the last year, and what our priorities are for next year. And this is kind of where we are right now, and it's something that we want to do annually, and we think it's important that we include the county as a part of that because they are partners in a lot of efforts to really make Montgomery a more thriving community. So that's going to almost conclude my mayor's message, Mr. President, but I do have one last piece, and this is probably the most fun, and that is I want to announce that we have our Martin Luther King Jr. Student Perspective Contest winners. And we've got a quick video, and then we'll announce who they are and their various age groups, and I'll take my seat. Show the video, please.
Good afternoon, and my name is Andrea McMath. And today I have chosen the Martin Luther Kings. I have seen the mountaintop. Thus meaning that no matter what we face, no matter how we're treated, and no matter how we're judged, that we've reached the mountaintop, and that it is time for us to stop judging black men and women because of the color of their skin. God said that we are all created equally in his eyes.
Hi, my name is Miriam Young, and the quote I chose today is darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do it. I like to this quote a lot because in this day and age, there isn't a lot of love in our world. A lot of people are turning on one another, and everyone's focusing on their differences and not their similarities. And not only that, but there hasn't really been any joyful things happening to reinvent our country. If we are...
Follow along with me, Jakaya Price Singleton, as we delve into the resounding words of Martin Luther King. A visual diary created by myself. Across the globe, Martin Luther King was known for his inspirational words, encouraging us to love others despite what they might have done to us. Quotes such as "Love is the only force, heck will transform an enemy into friend." Loving your enemies and others echoes throughout all of his speeches.
I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a verb to bear. This quote resonates with me for many reasons. One reason is because in many ways and circumstances, it is better to either love the person and treat them with the same level of kindness and love you want to be treated with, in hopes of changing them and their character.
On September 1st, 1967, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. addressed a group of psychologists in Washington, D.C. He spoke about civil rights, unemployment, urban riots in Vietnam. Dr. King believed that we should not drop bombs on Vietnam, and he thought the war caused more problems for America. He said, "It is my deep conviction that justice is invisible."
Martin Luther King Jr. was and still is the embodiment of a true leader. As a black man who was a civil rights movement, Martin Luther King Jr. had to cherish the charity dream despite being arrested, jailed, and oppressed continuously for the color of his feet. My favorite quote of Martin Luther King Jr. is "I am straight." This quote deeply resonates with me because we all have dreams, things we want to accomplish for changing the world for the better.
So at this time, I want to call up our winners. We have two groups, and then we're going to ask everyone to come to the center so we can take a picture with the city council. We have group one is ages eight to 13 years old, and we have first Mason Diller, Millan International Baccalaureate Academy. All right. You go right there beside Councilwoman Graham, right there in front of that seal, Councilman Line.
There you go.
Mason is a gold medal winner for group one. We also have, okay, we have our bronze winner, Andrea McMath, our bronze winner. Okay, and group one again is ages eight to 13 years old. Group two, our gold medal winner, Jaquia Price Singleton is now present, she's a student at Tennessee State University. But we do have our silver award winner, and that is Madeline Millage, Bogota, Washington Magna High School. Congratulations. There you go. Okay.
Let's get to it.
And our bronze winner for group two, Serenity Griffin, Lamp High School. And our silver winner in group one, Miriam Young, is not able to be here today, so we want to congratulate all of these winners for the work that they've done. I want to thank everyone who helped them for submitting this before the city, and at this time, I'd like for all the city councilmen and board to stand to me to take a group picture with them. Let's congratulate them once again.
Okay, I'll make it look this way, can you hurry? We all play, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as we reply to the report. If anybody wants to leave, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to leave at this time. You're excused if you want to. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, council, first item on the agenda.
Mr. President, item one, review of Southeast Pallet and Box Incorporated.
Mr. President, we have some...
Video?
Uh-huh, some pictures of what has been done out there, it looks really good. Also, I think we're in a place that...
Good job, Audrey, this is great.
This is the docking area, they had the Torson Foundation and...
Jeff, back there. Is somebody representing?
That was just an open space, I don't know if anybody remember, but that was just an open space when they first started. It wasn't closed in, wasn't any way for the trucks to pull up, they've done really good on that.
I think we have somebody here from the pallet company, Jeff, you here? Jeff Fallett? Is he here? Jeff, somebody from the pallet company here, I want to just say thank you for the job.
They have. They were committed to the process, and we appreciate them. So I'd like to release them if it pleases the council, they don't have to do another report, they're finished with the work, and I think they've done a great job.
Very good job. Maybe somebody was here from the pallet company, is that Jeff Fallett, Falletta? Anyway, we appreciate you being here. Okay, next item?
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance, amending ordinance number 30-2000 and revising the master plan to allow townhouses and single-family residential where office use was approved on property containing 21 acres on the south side of East Chase Lane, 400 feet east of Very Hill Road.
Tommy?
President, the planning commission unanimously recommended the rezoning of this property for the residential use, you stated.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, public hearing's been hailed, it's proper for the council, any motion?
We need to make sure there's no one on the phone.
Okay.
Is there anyone on the phone for item number two? I don't hear anybody, I'm getting a lot of chatter, but I'm not here...
Okay, public hearing's been hailed, it's proper for the council, any motion?
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt, okay, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning one lot located at 6815 Mobile Highway from an Ag 1 district to an M 3 district.
Okay, Tommy, you got anything?
Mr. President, the planning commission unanimously recommended the rezoning of this property regarding the conformity of all in the surrounding property.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward or speak up on the phone. Seeing none, hearing none, a public hearing's been hailed, it's proper for the council. We want to carry this over to the first meeting in March. It's from technical things that need to be handled between there and first March, so we'll take it over on first meeting in March.
Yes, sir. Item four, hearing on proposed ordinance, rezoning one parcel of land containing 50.67 acres located on the east side of Taylor Road, north of Troy Highway, from an Ag 1 district to an R 50 district.
Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission unanimously recommended the rezoning of this property for single-family homes.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward at this time, or call in on the phone. Hearing none, declared public hearing's been hailed, it's proper for the council.
Move to adopt.
Have motion to adopt, okay, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Number five, be carried over again?
Yes, sir. He was unable to be here.
Okay.
Item six, resolution appointing Todd Strange to the Montgomery Airport Authority.
You had a motion to adopt and then a motion substitute. Do you have...
Sure. Like to make a motion to substitute, we're doing that first?
Adopt first.
Adopt. A move to adopt.
Let's send this out.
Yeah. Move to adopt.
Now, a motion to a substitute.
And a motion to substitute.
We're substituting for Joe Green. Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Then voting on main motion, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution...
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item eight, resolution designated voting places for District Three special election.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay, next item?
Item nine, resolution appointing Angela Starr as municipal judge.
We have her in here tonight. Miss Starr, you here? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here today. So you have a nice resume. In motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Congratulations, welcome to the board.
Item ten, resolution ascending to the vacation of a portion of a unnamed street in Ranch Head Estates.
In motion to suspend rules on this?
Move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
In motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
In motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item eleven, resolution authorizing Mayor Reed to execute agreement with Al Dot for preliminary design for streetscape improvements along both sides of Molton Street from Talapusa Street to Montgomery Street.
Okay. Any questions on this item, counsel? In motion to adopt it? In motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item twelve, show cause hearing on resolution revoking the business license of Michelle Wilson doing business at Signature Events Center, Fifty-Fifty Narine Road.
Okay, this is the show cause hearing tonight, right? Okay. Your name to the record, sir?
Eddie Johnson.
Eddie Johnson, okay.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Yes, go ahead and tell us, tell us the story here, please.
All right, I'm going to show you a video first and then I can kind of explain what we have from there.
Y'all close fast?
Yeah.
I guess they gave her a close fast, now they're coming out.
Okay, I let the stress down.
Hey, hey, now we're just counting my weight.
Oh, you can't write no stuff out here.
Hey, we got five.
Ready? Deal? Ready?
Y'all close fast?
Yeah.
I guess they gave her a close fast, now they're coming out.
Okay, I let the stress down.
Hey, hey, now we're just counting my weight.
Oh, you can't write no stuff out here.
Hey, we got five.
Ready? Deal? Ready?
Ready.
All night, y'all just playing. Yeah, yeah, get the drip, man. They gonna give them drip from ya, y'all, y'all just playing. Yeah. Yeah, 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 we playing. I'mma turn it up a little more this time. My boy Chasten in this bitch. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But y'all just playing, cuz. Yeah, niggas start playing, man. That's a B. B did it. That's a motherfucker. Man, we lit all night, y'all just playing. She got your PD at the front though, y'all. Got some new officers out here, y'all pull up, we lit all night. Y'all see what going on? Pull y'all ass up, y'all ain't got nothing going on, y'all ain't got shit to do. Bring y'all ass up in that tunnel. The badass Saturday. Pull up. We finna pull up tonight. We turning up tonight, y'all. Push up on that. Fifty-fifty Narine Road. Going that bitch and thug it out tonight. Pull up. All black, you ain't gotta wear all black now. If you ain't got all black, you ain't gotta wear all black. Pull y'all ass up. We did it tonight, now.
Got everybody come?
Got me. If I can give a little explanation behind those videos. The first video was in reference to a time that we were called out there in September where an officer actually heard the shots, a call was called in, a female advised she was trapped in the bathroom. We tried to enter and the gentleman right there is who kept us from going inside the building until we were able to get one of the other owners there. Some of the other videos were actually taken from Mr. Johnson's Facebook. They were him promoting what they're doing inside the club from his Facebook. So that's just some of the things that we had to show in regards to that. But a couple of other things, back in June, they were operating after COVID hours during the time that there was a shutdown at a curfew and stuff. We went out there, did a report on it, advising that they were operating after hours. They advised that, they were told they had permission to stay open by an unknown councilman. Then on September eleventh, we went to investigate a complaint in regards to strippers staying open past curfew, alcohol sales. When we tried to enter, we were initially stopped. They finally let us in. Two females were observed in bikinis dancing at a pole. They exited through the back door. We initially counted about two hundred and ten people. Couldn't get an accurate count because there had been some folks who had entered out through the back door. September twelfth is the one I was explaining where we heard the shots, tried to get in, were unable to get in right away, finally went in, able to investigate. Everything was COVID-19, besides, we were pretty sure they were over capacity. We also had thirteen shell casings that were found out in the parking lot and a vehicle that was shot into. We tried to do a report for the individual whose vehicle was shot into, at which time he was called back into the business by security, came back out and advised us that they were going to pay for it, he didn't want to do a report. On September seventeenth, we responded out there due to a fight. On September twenty-eighth, we tried to clear the parking lot, they were over capacity, when somebody inside the club said somebody had a gun and all duty units had to respond. On October fourth, we had a large crowd, over capacity, had to shut down and block off entrances. On October tenth, we did a club detail. They were not, they were not the only ones included, but we did a club detail occupant count due to the COVID. They were over at two hundred and five patrons and they were cited by the fire department that day. October eighteenth, subject shot during a fight inside the club. We also had to respond for criminal mischief. And December twenty-sixth is the time that we had the murder. Three other individuals were shot, one who is still currently in the hospital and is probably going to be paralyzed, so. Yes, sir. And so, I just wanted to show that since the murder on December twenty-sixth, that there has been no change in conduct or in how they want to operate their business. As you can see by the last video, they're trying to utilize us as a safety measure to encourage folks to come out there and then also still inciting that, you know, it's just not, you know, just come on out and let's, you know, hang out and do whatever, instead of really trying to promote a more fashionable experience.
Okay. So how many calls with that service?
So when we came initially to site for the show cause, there were forty-seven. That includes duplicate calls where multiple officers have to respond. But since January fifth, we've had five additional investigative calls and then six other noise ordinance calls.
All right. What you have to say yourself?
Okay. So if you go on my Facebook page right now, I got a video posted. Who knows when that video was taken? You may go on and look at it and think it was taken last night. How you don't know I took that video last year? How you don't know if I took that video the year before that? It's promoting. So those videos don't really mean because on my Facebook page that it came from the night.
In one of the videos, the actual victim from the murder is in the video.
Okay, Eric, just like me, you may see me in the video, I'm there every night. So if we going to speak on what the business doing bad, let's speak on what MPD did bad the night of the murder. Let's think, let's speak on what...
They're not, they're not, we're not talking about, please, talk about you.
But she brought it up.
Well, you, you're the one here that talks about your club.
She's speaking on...
Now, we did have an incident involving one of the shootings that officers were involved in and they, that was handled departmentally and they were disciplined for it.
Okay, but I have a change in what we have done to the business as far as what can we do to make it safe inside? Now, the incident is that we have, the recent stuff that we have had have happened outside. We was told that we, the club, and our security handled what happened inside. Nothing has happened inside. Show us something that has happened inside that we have caused. Now, everything that I said happened recently have happened outside. What have we did to stop it? We didn't have no fights inside the building the night of what happened. We stopped everything from happening. We handed over to MPD and MPD didn't do their job to stop whatever situation happened. It could have been stopped fifteen, twenty minutes from what happened, happened. We did our job. Security did their job. I put my life on the line with no bulletproof vest while MPD is doing. I'm not, I don't have to go into it, you know exactly what happened. I put my life on the line. The owner put his life on the line. Security guards put their life on the line.
You're talking about the incident that happened in October.
We can talk about every incident. It's not just, it's not just the club's doing bad. We're not doing this to make money. We're not doing, we didn't open the doors to people come there and get hurt. We don't open our doors for things to happen. We try to have a place for people to go to have fun, enjoy themselves. We don't just do club and party. Show some videos where we do the baby shower, where we have stood out there and gave out food for Thanksgiving. We did a tour drive for Christmas. McKenna School, we giving, we donating back to the community. Let's speak about the good things we have done. We always come up here for all the bad stuff, but nobody say, okay, Synergy Event have this done, let's bring them in front of the board and acknowledge that. It's always about what we have done bad, when we're not the ones that caused the problem.
Let me stop you right there because what...
Talk to us, sir.
What you have shown is a continual propensity to allow illegal behavior to happen inside your club that turns into what happens in your parking lot that you're still responsible for. So even though you can say the things that you're saying, you can also show that you in fact, yourself is sitting on that video promoting people to come to your business just to come and get drunk. You say it right there in the video. Just come on out here and some of the explicit language that you use, that is not promoting a not hostile environment. Every time we go there, we can smell marijuana, we're constantly met with confrontation with you. You yourself personally tried to lock the doors twice from us trying to come in there.
I'm sure the officer got his body cam. I wish he would have uploaded and showed. I just stood at the door, not once did I put my hand to say you couldn't come in or nothing. He just stood there and took it upon himself not to enter the...
Mr. Johnson? Mr. President? Mr. Johnson, talk to us, please. Tell us what's your plan to address some of these situations with, you got something that you need to show the council?
Yes.
Can I get a copy of that from one of y'all?
Talk to us about this.
Okay, we have made changes to the establishment. As you can see in one of the videos, we didn't even have metal detectors. So we have went out and got metal detectors for the business. Not saying it's going to hundred percent catch anything to go in, but since we have got the metal detector, the one we have, is actually a great one. It tells you exactly what metal is detected on the person as they come through the building. It will go off in that area. We also have warns after we have searched the area. We have metal detector warns that we will also warn the area with. And we also have a magnet that we use that attracts metal as another safety. We also have better security than what we already had previously before. We have about seven, usually seven to eight guards and we're required, when we use MPD, we have to have three MPD officers outside at all times when we use them. We have upgraded our own security system and as you can see in the pictures, we have security cameras all the way around the building. I tried to get great copies of it, but I got what I can get. But inside and outside of the building, it's pretty much on every angle, you can pretty much see what's going on at all times. The other picture shows that we have the signs up that says no guns, you have ID to get in. It has face masks are required at all times in the building. On the other, it's the cameras inside the building, which pretty much shows every corner, there's no blind spots besides the bathrooms. Of course, you can't have cameras in there. And the last, well, the one before the last is a picture of the sign outside for the advertising for the business. We don't just operate as a club, we do birthday weddings, family unions and all other form of events. The bottom description on the first page pretty much breaks down the things that we do at Synergy Event. Like I said, besides just operating as a, as you can, everyone would call it a club as an entertainment center, we do reach out to the community and try to do other things and try to give people a place to go to enjoy themselves and do events.
Sir, what is your security company? What company do you contract with for security?
We actually, we actually have our, we have our own guards.
You have your own security company?
Yes. So we have training every week with people that we, with guards that have been working, let's say, up under somebody from another company or wherever they was with, that's not with her no more, we brought them to our place and we go through training and everything as far as searching and doing the right thing.
Are they licensed?
They're not licensed.
What was that?
Security is not licensed.
So you don't have a licensed security company?
No, it's not licensed security.
Can I make a recommendation for you? I think you need to get licensed security.
Well, I mean, that's what we're working on. It seemed kind of hard to get some licensed security, but that's something we have been working on.
Okay.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
I do, Mr. President. Mr. Johnson, is that right?
Yes.
What's the capacity in your building?
Capacity, capacity in the building is three hundred.
Okay. So when they came, it was two something?
Two oh five, yes, ma'am.
So...
So they should have had about one forty-eight, one forty-eight.
Oh, this was during the COVID?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It was.
Have you paid your fines?
There has been paid. Actually, we turned it in like right...
Okay. But you've paid your fines?
Yeah, it's been paid.
Any other question?
Mr. Johnson, I got one recommendation I would like to make. We talk about your security officers and I know you say you're working on it. I would recommend that you hire a professional security team to assist you with your facility. Instead of, you know, you're just bringing in your own security, we need to have contract professional people, you know, that you can find at a reasonable rate that's going to go out and do the work and make sure your business is safe in the environment. And we're required when we use MPD, we have to have three MPD officers outside at all times when we use them. We have upgraded our own security system. And as you can see in the pictures, we have security cameras all the way around the building. I tried to get great copies of it, but I got what I can get. But inside and outside of the building, it's pretty much on every angle, you can pretty much see what's going on at all times. The other picture shows that we have the signs up that says no guns. You have ID to get in. It has face masks are required at all times in the building. On the other, it's the cameras inside the building which pretty much shows every corner. There's no blind spots besides the bathrooms. Of course, you can't have cameras in there. And the last, well, the one before the last is the picture of the sign outside for the advertising for the business. We don't just operate as a club. We do birthday wins, family unions and all other form of events. The bottom description on the first page pretty much breaks down the things that we do at synergy event. Like I said, besides just operating as a, as you can, everyone would call it a club as an entertainment center, we do reach out to the community and try to do other things and try to give people a place to go to enjoy theyself and do events.
Sir, what is your security company? What company do you contract with for security?
We actually, we actually have, we have our own guards.
You have your own security company?
So we, we, we have training every week with people that we, with guards that have been working, let's say, up under somebody from another company or whoever they was with that's not with or no more. We bought them to our place and we go through training and everything as far as searching and doing the right thing.
Are they licensed?
They're not licensed.
What was that?
Security's not licensed.
So you don't have a licensed security company?
No, it's not licensed security.
Can I make a recommendation for you? I think you need to get licensed security.
Well, I mean, that's what we're working on. It seemed kinda hard to get some licensed security, but that's something we have been working on.
Okay.
I have a question.
Any other questions to Mr. Johnson?
I do, Mr. President. Mr. Johnson, is that right?
Yes.
What's the capacity in your building?
Capacity, capacity in the building is 300.
Okay, so when they came, it was two something.
205, yes ma'am.
So.
So they should have had about 148, 148.
This was during the COVID when they, okay.
It was.
Have you paid your fines?
There has been paid. Actually, we turned it in like right-
Okay, but you've paid your fines?
Yeah, they've been paid.
Any other question?
Mr. Johnson, I got one recommendation I would like to make. We talk about your security officers and I know you say you're working on it. I would recommend that you hire a professional security team to assist you with your facility. Instead of, you know, you just bringing in your own security, we need to have contract professional people, you know, that you can find at a reasonable rate that's gonna go out and do the work and make sure your business is safe in the environment. That would be my recommendation to you.
And Councilman Calhoun?
Yes, ma'am.
The ordinance actually requires them, if they're using security, to use licensed security.
Okay, so we need to make sure you abide by licensed security.
Okay. Okay. Anybody got any other questions? Let's move on to the next item here, the resolution revoking the business license. Anybody have a motion on that item?
Mr. President, on item 13 on the resolution to revoke the business license, I would like to carry that item over for six months. And I want to review, Mr. Johnson, towards you hiring those security officers. Recommend that you strongly hire your off-duty or security officers to assist you with that. No more of the people that you say you're training. Get a company that can come out there and assist you with your business. So if it's the will of the council, I would like to carry item 13 over for six months and I want to review it in six months.
Okay.
Mr. President. And, and-
Quickly.
Our attorney just said that it says in, in the, in the ordinance that they must be licensed, so therefore just how I'm understanding is they can't be open until they have a licensed security company. Am I correct, Stacey?
Do they require security?
Because if we willingly know that they don't-
I don't know that our ordinance requires them to have security. It just requires that if they have security, it be licensed through the state.
So are we liable if anything happens out there? And they don't have licensed, quote, licensed security?
Well, when, when law enforcement goes in, they can check to see if the security individuals are licensed. The security officers are required to show their cards to show that they are licensed by the state.
So we're not liable?
If we allow them to operate with security that's not licensed, we are allowing them to violate the ordinance.
Then we need some sort of understanding before this man lays here tonight.
So, Mr. Calhoun. So can they come back in two weeks and show you proof of that license for the, the security company that they have?
What are your days of operation? What days are you open?
I mean, whenever, whenever someone from the community wanna pretty much use the building, rent it out.
You rent it out?
I mean, I can, yeah, I mean, whenever, I mean, whenever pretty much an event is going on, it can be any day of the week, but mostly we try to do a Friday, Saturday and Sunday, which is when most people are off working on the weekends.
Okay, so, so you're not promoting this on your own? What we're trying to get to, I mean, I'm not gonna revoke your license at this point, sir. I'm gonna work with you to do the things that you need to do with your biz, but you got to let me know that you gonna hire some security people. You know, if you got to invest in your biz with a licensed security company, basically what our attorney is telling me that you need in order to stay open. I'm saying I'm gonna carry it over for six months, but I'm gonna do it for two months. And I want to make sure that you have licensed security. So in two months, we want to revisit to make sure that you have a contract with a licensed security company that's doing your events. So if you do rent it, if, if Calhoun comes to rent it, then it's in my contract that I'm licensed security will be at the event center to make sure things are going safe. You understand what we're asking?
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
I guess my question, just one other question. So that's any event that they have there, like, so if I'm having a baby shower, they have to have security that, that night?
I don't, I don't think.
That's why I'm just wanna make sure that we're clear. So-
The ordinance does not require them to have security.
Okay.
So it just, so you saying security is like an option? You said the ordinance don't require you to have it, so it's an option to have security?
The ordinance requires that if you have security inside your building, it be licensed security.
Well, Mr. Johnson, and I know we saying it, but, but let, let's if you're gonna have an event or party, you need to have some licensed and security. Don't think that they're saying you just don't have to have any because clearly stuff can get out of hand.
Well, I get what you're saying. I just see he kept saying was, oh, we're not reliable if something happened. I just wanted to clear it up that it's not a requirement, it's an option. But I will get licensed security in no part.
If you're having an event where, you know, you're gonna have young people, teenagers, not to just pick up them, where you feel like a baby shower, no, I wouldn't expect you to have seven or eight security officers for a baby shower or wedding, but you know the events that you-
Yes, sir.
So just make sure they're contracted and licensed when you have those type of events.
If he's having a teen event, he's gotta have a permit for it.
Right. Teen, teen event, you would have to come before the, for a permit anyway. But these are adult entertainment venues. You know when you rent those places, you know when you need security. So just make sure they're licensed.
Gotcha.
And that does require license.
Okay. I think what we're doing, carrying over six months, but you gonna have a
No, no, it's an entertainment.
But if, if, if I may, Mr. President and Mr. Calhoun,
Yes, ma'am.
Before, before we let Mr. Johnson go, I mean, it wasn't just about licensing security, the issues that we have. So, you know, there's some other things that we need them, because if, when they come back in two months, if they get, we still getting the same calls, I don't really care that he got licensed security at that point. I'm concerned about, you know, the whole, you know, having to have all these calls and different stuff, so I, I just want you to, you know, everything you can to make sure it stays safe. If that mean you have to, you know, tell some people that, you know, they can't come, because every time they come, they bring drama, then just be aware of that because they gonna cause you problems.
So, so let me say one thing, and I, I keep on referring to the mayor and also Chief Finley. We do have a meeting every month with the club owners here in Montgomery. And we, with the fire department came out this time, so we are going over those expectations. We are telling them what we are looking for because at the end of the day, we don't wanna see, you know, thriving businesses closed down every week. So they know what we talk about in those meetings. They know what's expected and they know, once they come in front of this council, what we gonna do. So it's clear to, at those meetings that they attend, and they have been to every meeting that we have. We have had two meetings. So they have been dedicated to those meetings.
Well, I think then, Counselor Mitchell, then y'all should bring those expectations here too, because I wanna know what you're telling them. I wanna know, you know, I'm, I'm not there. I know you've invited me, but I want it to be clear. I want it to be no misunderstanding that they had one conversation with you and come before us and it's something else, because I mean, I'd be the first one to raise my hand and say, I don't want that open.
Yeah.
You know, so we, we need to have that clear.
Can we have, can I recommend all the city councilmen, maybe entertainment center clubs, at least once a month, every two months, get together? Instead of just him coming out to support.
Yeah, he, he spearheading it, so sure, that's fine with me.
Mr. Mitchell, then. No, no, none of those incidents happened after you had them. Okay. All right, this will be carried over six months.
Two months. He changed it to two months.
Too much, okay, that's good. All right. We'll see you back in two months. Gotcha, I'm gonna call you.
Item 14, application for a restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Vintage Cafe 416 Cloverdale Road.
Hello, hey, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Your name is? Judd?
Yeah, my name is Judd Boynton.
Okay. There were some people signed up, Rosa Moses and Walter Moses. I guess they're, they still here? This is, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Speak up on the phone. Hearing none, except the public hearing's been held. It's talked for the council. You have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
And motion adopt, on favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Go over your business, Judd.
Thank you. You'll have a good night.
Item 15, application for a lounge retail liquor class one license doing business is Pine Bar 501 Cloverdale Road, Suite 104.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Your name for record, sir?
Kason Willet.
Kason, yes, Kason. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone likes to speak against this item, please come forward at this time. Or call it on the phone. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing's been held. It's talked for the council. You have a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
On favor, suspend the rule. On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Go over your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item 16, resolution appointing Keltrick McGee to the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Need a motion to suspend rules on rest of the agenda?
Motion to suspend the rules, rest of the agenda.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 17, resolution appointing Kenati D. Lee to the Montgomery Clean City Committee.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt? On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 18, resolution appointing Kelvin R. Green to the Electrical Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. 19, resolution appointing KK Middleton to the Housing Authority.
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 20, resolution appointing QB Ray Hayes to the Parks and Recreation Board by Counselor McInnis.
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. 21, resolution appointing Keith Ledger to the Parks and Recreation Board by Counselor Calhoun.
Move to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. 23, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of the listed locations.
Need a motion to hold?
Move to hold?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. 23, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various lights.
Randy, you have a thing? You okay?
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. 24, resolution declaring, authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lights.
Move to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, we have several more resolutions here. We start with the-
Yes, sir. We're starting with District 2, resolution appointing Gentia Corina to the Museum Board.
Need a motion to adopt? Need a motion to suspend rules? Motion to suspend rules, on favor, raise your hand.
Who made, who made, did you make the motion?
Yeah?
Unanimous.
Okay, need a motion adopt?
Motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. For Counselor Calhoun, resolution appointing Barry G. Robinson to the Architectural Review Board.
Move to suspend the rules.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay. Now, sir, you have the-
Yes, sir. I put contingencies before you. The first two, Mayor Reed has approved for District 1, 200 to Duchess, Divas and Gents Youth. For District 5, 500 to MPS for Jeff Davis High School. 1,000 to Seth Johnson, 1,000 to Brentwood Homeowners Association, 1,000 to Young Point, 1,000 to Gay Meadows Glad Lane Clubview, 1,000 to Sutton Place Homeowners Association. And since then, Mayor, I've received some extra ones for, from District 6, $500 to Youth in Action and 1,000 to Mental Health America. They're both vendors. And for District 9, 2,500 to the Lagoon Park Trail Group, and it is a vendor.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Blaine?
District 2, I'd like to do 500 to the Duchess and Divas. I think it's their annual event or whatever.
Okay.
QB Ray Hayes runs that one.
Okay. We've got it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Need a motion to adopt?
Move to, motion to adopt?
On favor, raise your hand.
Yep, it's growing.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Saying nothing else, I declare meeting adjourned.